Good evening. We're calling back to order this meeting of the Sacramento City Unified School District Board of Education. Item 4.1, our broadcast statement, which will be read tonight by our student board member Halbo.
This meeting of the Sacramento City School Board is being recorded in its entirety and will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on Comcast, Consolidated Communications, and AT&amp;T U-verse. Today's meeting will air Sunday, November 18th at 9:00 a.m. and Monday, November 19th at noon, and webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv. We welcome members of the audience to address the board. Please complete a speaker form located in the back of the community room and give them to our communications representative along with any handouts you may have for the board prior to the conclusion of the item's presentation. Please speak into the microphone when addressing the board and state your name for the record. Please limit comments during public comment to items that are not on the agenda. If you do comment on an item that is on the agenda, we will ask that you please defer your comments until your item comes up on the agenda. Please also turn off your cell phones or place them on silent or vibrate.
Thank you, Board Member Halbo. Item 4.2, tonight's pledge of allegiance, which will be led by Leslie Baez-Vargas, who is a sixth grade student at Pony Express. Leslie, if you'll please approach the podium.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
Leslie, please stay there. Thank you. Tonight...
Leslie, if you'll please come back up. Our first vice president, Daryl Wu, has an opportunity to speak a little bit about you this evening.
Tonight's stellar student is Leslie Baez-Vargas, a sixth grade student from Pony Express. Leslie is an excellent student who goes above and beyond to make sure she's doing her best but also to help her friends and classmates. She is very responsible and respectful to everyone, and her kindness is a model to those around her. Leslie has perfect attendance, strong academics, and a symmetrical character, as well as a fantastic smile. Leslie, would you like to say a few words?
I'm grateful to be here in Pony Express.
Wonderful, Leslie.
Stay there.
Vice President Wu is going to come down to take a picture with you. We so appreciate your hard work, and we love that you are a representative ambassador for Pony Express. Item 5.0, announcement of action taken in closed session.
Yes, Madam President. I have two announcements out of closed session. One announcement is that the board, by five affirmative votes with Board Members Hanson and Cochran absent, authorized the filing of a declaratory relief action. In the other matter, it is a special education matter in case number OAH 2018-060844, whereby six affirmative votes with Board Member Hanson absent approved that OAH settlement. That concludes the announcements out of closed session, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Barons. Item 6.0, agenda adoption. Do we have an emotion?
No.
Do we have a second? Student preferential vote?
Aye.
All those in favor? Aye. The motion carries. Item 7.0, public comment. This will be public comment on non-agendized items. If you can please limit your public comments to two minutes, we will ensure that we give you your full two minutes and make room for our other public commentaries. Do we have any public comment this evening, Mr. Barrios?
Yes, we have 11 public comments. If you could come up in the order that you hear your name, please. David Fisher, followed by Megan Lucas, Maria Quintero Laningham, Jana Fisher, Troy Flint, Cheshua Beckett, Eduardo De Leon, Kathy Petrie, Paul Ari, Lindsay Flint, and Ian Arnold.
Hello. I'm David Fisher, President of Sacramento City Teachers Association. I know that a lot of us are feeling rather overwhelmed by the tragedy that is still ongoing unfortunately up north, and we're seeing the smoke around here, and we've had to make some tough decisions about how to best care for our students and our families. So, the Paradise Teachers, normally we would go right to the source, but unfortunately the town is pretty much wiped out. So, the Chico Unified Teachers have kind of taken the lead on that. So, I'd just like to let everyone know that if you're interested in immediate help to the families and our brothers and sisters up there, you can go to our webpage, sacteachers.org, or the Facebook page, and there's a GoFundMe account that is being run out from the Chico Unified Teachers that'll get immediate help. And it's going to be a long process and a lot of displacement, so that's quite, as we all know, just kind of hard to wrap our heads around. I also understand there's, talking to some of the community out here, that there's a lot of parents and community members that are here to support the parent participation preschool. Personally, both my children went through that program with Ms. Anita, and I don't know how she does it, but she remembers all of us and all of her students, so just want to put my personal support behind that program, and I think it does a lot to help our school district. So, just wanted to say that as well. Besides that, everybody has a safe and healthy Thanksgiving break. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Fisher. I did want to say, in addition to the GoFundMe account that you've referenced, which I so appreciate for our teachers and families out in the Paradise area, there is also a GoFundMe account for our students who are college students at the Community College who are without homes and resources right now.
Good evening. My name is Megan Lucas, and I'm a parent involved in the Tahoe Parent Participation Preschool Program. I wanted to speak tonight and give my testimony at how grateful I am for this program. I moved from Texas back in May, and we have nothing like this. And I'm thrilled at the education my kids are going to receive here in California. They'll be more well-rounded. But as a stay-at-home mom, and not necessarily the best role models growing up, I often find myself lost as a parent on how to handle my children's behavior. And with this program, within the short month, my son Lake Lucas has stopped spitting, he's stopped cursing. I have to say, I don't curse as much either, because that helps. And he's using his words instead of lashing out at his mates. I love that we're following the Positive Discipline book and the flashcards. They have an app for everything, but it's very useful, and I'm behind this program 100%, and I think we should keep it going for parents like me who need help and guidance.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Maria Quintero Laningham, and I'm also a parent at the Tahoe Parent Participation Preschool. As an educator, I can only speak to how important it is to have parent involvement with our students, and as fellow educators, you know how hard that can be. And what a wonderful program to have parent involvement right from the beginning, and what an opportunity it gives parents not only to be involved with the education of their students, but to be empowered, to have that chance to help their students at home learn and know what's going on. And I hope that you take that in consideration, that this population that is being served by this might not have any other options for this. So, thank you for listening to my comments.
Thank you.
My name is Jana Fisher, and I'm also here on behalf of the Parent Participation Preschool Program. We attend Tahoe, and I'm also a PTO board member at Phoebe Harris Elementary with my third and fifth grade children. And when looking for inspiration today, I took a picture of the flyer, actually, and at the bottom it says, "Building a brighter future for parents and their children," which it absolutely does. I'm an educator myself, and I've spent many years working with children. And really, at all levels, this program affects our community. It gives lots of children the opportunity to attend preschool that may not otherwise have this opportunity. It helps our elementary school teachers have children and parents that are better prepared to participate and be 100% involved in the community. And it gives, at a district level, positive benefits, because you do have that community aspect where we're all, from the beginning, able to help each other, know each other, build each other up. Like Megan mentioned, a lot of us don't have extended family or people that are able to be teammates with us in raising these small children, and it just gives them every opportunity to be better students and better community members as children in the district and parents.
Thank you.
Thank you for listening to me. Have a good night.
My name's Cheshua Beckett, and I teach at Rosemont High School, and I saw you out, Board Member Pritchett, today assessing the air quality situation. I do want to thank you very much for that. I am the mother of five children, four of which have attended the Parent Participation Preschool at OW Early Wine, and I'm hoping that my last child will be starting preschool there soon. I am an educator, I am educated, and I have family support. Yet despite all these privileges, I have absolutely needed help understanding and meeting the needs of my preschool-aged children. Parents are parents regardless of their educational and socioeconomic background, and all parents face different struggles, and all parents can benefit from additional supports. I know that I do not have to tell you the vital benefits of preschool for children, so I'm not going to. The beauty of the Parent Participation Preschool is that we, the parents, are the students. We attend parenting classes and learn how to foster a love of learning in our children. And when necessary, we learn how to positively discipline them. If we truly want students to be successful in school, we cannot ignore the component of home. There are other places in the budget that can be cut. Please do not cut this crucial program. It helps support our preschool children in school and facilitate their preparedness and integration into public school. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Cheshua.
Good evening, Board Members. My name is Paul Ari. I'm a parent, and I'm speaking on behalf of the preschool program. I'm here today to share the positive and how great that program is, and it's actually helped out my family tremendously, as in not just helping us guide through the first-time parent questions and answers. And so, seeing the other parents involved in the program too has been, it's just one of those things, as a parent, you're like, wow, okay, that's how you deal with it. And so, being parent-involved is a great thing. So, I wanted to speak positively about this program. We live down the street, so we get to walk to school. We're starting young, and I've seen my son grow and understand and have that community type of interaction with other kids. And the biggest things that we've had as a parent is questions of, how's my son doing? Is he behind the curve? Is he ahead of the curve? You know, all those things were, as a parent, first-time parent, you worry. This program has really put my family at ease. My wife also is more confident of how our son's doing, and so, just wanted to speak positively about this program, and if you could just keep it going, whatever we have to do. I'm willing to do it to go out and car wash or whatever. But, you know, so, that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Troy Flint. I'm also here to speak on behalf of the Parent Participation Preschool Program. My daughter is a student at the Tahoe Elementary Program. My wife will come up after me to testify to the great benefits it's had for her and also for our child. So, I'll just speak generally to some of the choices that I know that you're facing. There are no easy decisions, but as we're talking about the decisions that we have to make to support our children, I think we need to look long-term, and the early investments are the ones that are going to pay off the most. The Parent Participation Preschool is a unique program, or at least a very rare program that SAC City offers, that's a differentiator in an era when parents have lots of choices, and it is something that can help attract and retain families in this district. That's very important as you're looking to maintain the district going forward. It's had a great effect on our daughter, and there are many students out there who are in even needier situations who could benefit much more. And I think those are the students you need to be thinking about. When I was here a couple weeks ago, and we looked at the student achievement data, it was underwhelming, and that's not a criticism of SAC City. Most other districts with similar demographics are in the same situation. But the highest leverage opportunity to improve results for students is by getting that support when they're young. And the Parent Participation Preschool does this in a very special way, because it brings a parent into the classroom, and the parent is the guide on the student's educational journey. And engaging them is one of the qualities, one of the factors, that is cited in the SAC City LCAP plan. You talk about getting kids college and career-ready. You talk about engaging family and community and empowering parents, and this program does all of those, so please support it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Superintendent Aguilar, President Ryan, members of the board. I'm Eduardo De Leon with the Language Academy of Sacramento, and this is Kathy Petrie, a parent and also vice president of our board. And tonight, we just wanted to, one, announce that in January, we'll be submitting our petition for renewal. So, this is in a formal announcement, but wanting to make sure that we can share some information about our students and how we've progressed. Recently, Tom Torleksen, State Superintendent, was able to visit our school and highlight our work as part of the global initiative for 2030 in terms of really implementing and increasing the number of dual-language programs across the state. So, I'm going to actually pass it over to Kathy, and if it's possible for us to share our time, we would appreciate that. Yeah? We actually have something to share on the dot cam, if it's possible, and then I'll give you all a copy so you can walk away with it.
So, Sheila, if you can add an additional two minutes to their time, since they're combining their time?
Okay. Thank you. Again, my name is Kathy Petrie. I am parent representative on the Board of Directors for the Language Academy of Sacramento. Tonight, I'd like to share some data with you, but before I do, I would like to share with you what makes our program so special. The Language Academy is a charter program, a dual-immersion program, where our kindergarteners and our first graders receive 90% of their instruction in English and 10% in Spanish. We increase 10% instruction in English every year, such that by fifth grade, it's a 50-50 mix, and it stays that way throughout the rest of the program till eighth grade. Now, research shows that it takes five to seven years for a person to acquire a second language and become fully bilingual. And we watch our kids through the different stages of acquiring biliteracy through their third final stage of full biliteracy in seventh and eighth grade. Now, as you know, state testing starts in third grade, and state testing is given in English, which means that our students are testing at a relative disadvantage, at least until fifth grade, because the primary language in the classroom is Spanish. So, now, let's look at some data. CASF aggregate scores would tend to indicate that Language Academy is not performing very well, but because of the blend of languages changing every year, aggregate scores frankly don't tell our story. So, if you look at the data, looking at grade-level scores, LASS shows that year upon year, we are increasing the number of students that meet or exceed standards, such that when our kids acquire full biliteracy, they are exceeding expectations and outperforming the state, the district, and our neighboring schools. What you see in front of you are English language, well, you're supposed to have English Language Arts numbers in front of you, but that's okay. Math numbers don't tell a different story. We're actually, over here. Okay. In math, also, the trend is, over the years, we are increasing the number of students that meet or exceed state standard expectations. And so, we outperform the state, the district, and our neighboring schools by the end of our program when our kids are fully bilingual. So, I want to tell you, as a parent, the Language Academy is a long-term investment, and in those early years, it takes a level of faith to know that this program is going to deliver on their promise. But by the end of eighth grade, standardized test results show that the Language Academy outperforms the district, the state, and neighboring schools. And on top of that academic performance, our kids are graduating the program fully bilingual in a second language, which is Spanish in this case. So, as a parent in the district, I really want to thank the board and the Sacramento Unified School District for supporting and having your faith in dual-immersion programs and for your continued support of the Language Academy of Sacramento. Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. My name is Lindsay Flint, and I'm a parent of a student in the Parent Participation Preschool Program. I just wanted to touch on a few brief points about the value of this program. First, a quick mention of how much we love and appreciate our teachers, ours especially, Ms. Tamara. She's a valuable asset to your organization. Secondly, as parents, we're very familiar with the process of living under a budget. We understand the type of either-or decision-making that's required to balance the immediate needs of each family member while keeping an eye on the big picture. I invite the board to view this program as both meeting the immediate needs of these children in terms of growth, development, and kindergarten readiness, but also as being a part of your big picture. Besides money coming in from grants and state and federal funding, the next most valuable asset the district has is parent participation. Just last week, a parent came into our classroom announcing they were hosting a jewelry sale, the proceeds of which would fund all their art program materials. The program is 100% volunteer-run, and without these parents, there would be no program. Aside from reducing the expense of children coming to kinder unprepared or behind, this program is an asset teaching parents how to participate in your schools, to fundraise, to coordinate, to communicate in the school system. Where funding stops, parents step up to fill in the gap. Please consider keeping our program in your budget as an investment in the future K-12 families of your school district. Thank you.
Thank you. And Ian?
Good evening, President Ryan, Superintendent Aguilar, board members, Ian Arnold for SEIU representing classified employees. A very angry Ian Arnold. I'm pretty pissed off tonight, and the reason for that is, when my members are accused of something, they're immediately placed on paid admin leave while the district investigates. We recently went through a process where we investigated allegations against a principal. We wrote a four-page letter to the district outlining those allegations, and I find out today that not only has the principal not been placed on paid admin leave and directed not to bully people anymore, that there has essentially been no investigation. Folks that I've been talking to throughout the day have not been talked to by anybody investigating this. I was talked to, asked to outline more clearly my allegations. I'm livid. If this had been a classified employee, they'd be out. Instead of actually the district taking the allegations and then going out to the school site and investigating, I talked to classified employees, I talked to teachers, parents sought me out to talk about how horrible this principal is. I provided names, I provided information as a starting point. I find out today that the principal and her representative have been handed a copy of my written complaint, naming the people who've laid these allegations against her, and she is now going to have until after the Thanksgiving break to invent a story to explain all that stuff. That's crap. If she's still at work after the break, my employees are not going to that school site. I'll put up a picket line around that site. And because apparently there's nothing confidential here, because apparently this information's okay to hand out to the person who's committing the crimes and the rep, I'm going to go out to my car here shortly and bring you all copies of the document that I provided to the district, so you can see why it is so important that that person not be allowed to be at the school site to interfere with the investigation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Arnold.
Good evening. My name is Ephraim Taklaimonuts. I'm here in support of the Parents' Participation Preschool at Tahoe Elementary. As a man who was raised by spanking and shaming, the way I knew how to raise my child was the way I was raised. But by enrolling my child in this Parents' Participation Preschool, I learned how to raise my child using positive disciplining. Positive disciplining is way more useful than any other technique I have ever learned in my life. By helping fund this Parents' Participation Preschool, our school district is helping build community and emotionally healthy children. This is the foundation to the child's learning development and helping parents raise well-behaved future students. Thank you.
Thank you. I was at that podium with my little boy about that size as I was being sworn in, so it makes my heart happy.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Ashley Jackson. I don't have anything prepared for you this evening. I showed up just to show support for the Parent Participation Program. I was asked to speak because in the class, I showed my passion for the class. I was raised with my father, who was very militant, very strict, and that's where we learned to parent. I was showing these same qualities towards my children. I would see my daughter shut down like how I did when I was growing up. But through this program, I've been equippeded with different tools, different techniques to use positive discipline, redirection, and I've seen my child grow. I don't have any statistics to give to you. I just have my own personal experience. We did do the Head Start Program, and I feel like that was just a free daycare for a lot of the other students there. I would go in, and parents would come in smelling of marijuana, and I know teachers are mandated to report these, to somebody up high, but it wasn't being reported. And I feel like in this Parent Participation Program, parents are more serious about the education. We're learning to participate in our kids' education and to help with fundraising, to help with volunteering in class. I went to a school where that wasn't a thing. Parents would drop their kids off, say, hey, see you later. And at the school that my child is at, there's a lot more parent participation due to the program that a lot of her classmates were in, and her classmates' parents participated in that program. So, it's not really a preschool, it's adult education, where we're learning as well as our students.
Thank you very much. We appreciate you speaking tonight. Do we have any other further public comments?
No further comments.
Moving on to item, oh, we have a board member comment. Board Member Pritchett.
Thank you, President Ryan. I just wanted to personally thank everyone who came out tonight in support of the Parent Participation Preschool and sharing some of your personal stories. I know it's not easy to get up in front of the Board of Education and share those. I, myself, was a Parent Participation Preschool recipient, and a recipient of Ms. Anita's greatness, and, there she is back there, and of my now 25-year-old, yes, she's been around that long. And I just wanted to just encourage you guys to stay empowered and stay engaged at all costs, okay? And I'm happy to meet with anybody.
Thank you, Board Member Pritchett. Item 8.0, public hearings. Item 8.1, the hearing and adoption of the district's initial proposals regarding certificated unit Sacramento City Teachers Association collective bargaining agreement, negotiations for the 2019 to 2022 calendar period. Consey will be presenting. Ms. McKernan?
Good evening, President Ryan, members of the board, Superintendent Aguilar. We are here to effectively sunshine, which it means to tell you about, for hearing purposes and later adoption, our original general proposals with regards to upcoming bargaining. So, essentially...
So, essentially, to kick it off, there is ed code that requires that before we engage in any negotiation sessions, that there's an opportunity, one, to let the public know and be aware that the district is interested in beginning negotiations, and to share what those areas might be around. For this particular one, with our teachers' union, as you know, we have many wonderful educators, both in the classroom and providing classroom support and services. This contract ends June 30th of 2019. So, this bargaining session would be for the 1920, 2021, 2122 school years. The district is sunshining 10 articles. As this contract is one that ends June 30th, 2019, the entire contract will be open. So, Article 5, Hours of Employment, to propose amendments, including but not limited to the instructional materials, I'm sorry, minutes and day schedules, around evaluations, looking at revising the evaluation tool and process. And again, this is general and opening, because we have to engage in the actual negotiations process. Article 8, on transfers, which speaks to the process and timelines related to our hiring. Article 11, Safety Concerns, I know that you have this and can read. But also Article 12, which is compensation, to propose to negotiate in good faith over compensation within the limits of the available financial resources. Employee benefits, Article 13, class sizes, Article 17, organizational rights, organizational security, and the duration, which essentially means that through the negotiation process, it may be a three-year tentative agreement that we come back with, a two-year or one-year. It's for whatever the duration of the tentative agreement is. So, with this, we ask for your approval eventually after the hearing regarding the sunshining articles for SETA.
No public comments?
We have no public comments on this item. Do we have board member questions or comments? We have none. This is not an item that our student board member will be voting on, but this is an action item. Do we have a motion? Second? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstain? Motion carries. Thank you. Item 8.2, The Hearing and Adoption of the District's Initial Proposals Regarding United Professional Educators, UPE: Collective Bargaining Agreement, Negotiations for the 2019-2022 Calendar Period.
Good evening, Board President Ryan, members of the board, Superintendent Aguilar. I did not introduce Dulcinea Grantham, who is sitting here with me, but wanted to make sure that you're aware. With regards to the hearing and adoption of UPE, which are our United Professional Educators, our principals, assistant principals, site instruction coordinators, and some administrators that work in the central office are members that make up this bargaining unit. This also, similarly, is a contract that will end June 30th, 2019. And so, this is a successor agreement in that the entire contract is open. With this, we are looking to sunshine and begin negotiations with this labor partner for the next round of tentative agreements, for the next three years, one to three years. Article 3, similarly, the organizational rights, as we look at salary and benefits, proposing to negotiate in good faith over compensation within the limits of available financial resources, the work year for this bargaining partner, as well as retiree health benefits and the term of the agreement. And just a reminder that this means that we can begin negotiations, but is not specific to what will actually be passed back and forth. The district will then come back to share the tentative agreements. So, we ask for your approval.
Thank you. Do we have any public comment on this item?
No public comments.
Do we have any board member questions or comments? None. Do we have a motion? Second? All those in favor? Aye. Any abstain? Opposed? None. The motion carries. Item 8.3, The Hearing and Adoption of the District's Initial Proposals Regarding Service-Employ International Union, Local 1021: Collective Bargaining Agreements for the Period 19-20 Reopener.
Good evening, Board President Ryan, members of the board, Superintendent Aguilar, Consey McCarn, the Chief Human Resource Officer, and with me Dulcinea Grantham. Took the third time, and I think I got all of it in that time. We are here to sunshine, prepare, and begin negotiations with SEIU, one of our labor partners who represents our hard-working, the majority of our hard-working classified employees, including those that work at school sites, as well as central office, as well as departments. This is a reopener. So, with this one, it means that the contract is still valid, but within the last agreement, there was, was an agreement that the district could, or the union could, sunshine a couple of articles. So, that just means reopen them. Even though the contract is closed, we can re-engage to look at specific articles. In this case, compensation, proposing to negotiate in good faith over compensation within the limits of available financial resources, as well as fringe benefits. And again, we ask your approval.
Do we have any public comment on this item?
No public comments.
Any board member questions? None. Do we have a motion? Second? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carries. Moving on to item 8.4, The Hearing and Adoption of the District's Initial Proposals Regarding the Teamsters Union, Local 150: Collective Bargaining Agreement for the 1920 Calendar Period Reopener.
Good evenings. Board President Ryan, members of the board, Superintendent Aguilar, Consey McCarn, Chief Human Resource Officer, with me Dulcinea Grantham. The reopener for our Teamsters bargaining partner, and Teamsters represents our plant managers that work at the school site, as well as at the CERNAS Center. And this, similarly, is a reopener. So, the contract is in effect, but there's an opportunity to look at a couple of articles within that for the 1920 school year. And in this case, it will be compensation to propose to negotiate in good faith over compensation within the limits of the available financial resources, as well as fringe benefits. Similarly, we ask for your approval.
Thank you. Public comment on item 8.4?
No public comments.
Do we have a motion? All those in favor? Opposed? Abstain? The motion carries. Our final item under public hearing, 8.5, The Hearing and Adoption of the District's Initial Proposals Regarding the Teamsters Classified Union: Supervisors' Collective Bargaining Agreement for the Period of 2019-2020 Reopener.
Good evening, Board President Ryan, members of the board, Superintendent Aguilar, Consey McCarn, Chief Human Resource Officer, with Dulcinea Grantham. And this request, hearing and adoption, is in regards to our Teamsters Classified Supervisors. So, those are hard-working classified supervisors in nutrition, in transportation, in maintenance and operations, and in some centrally. Our bringing forward to you tonight is a reopener. So, similarly, this contract is in effect and not set to expire this year. However, we do have reopener language, which allows us to open a couple of articles. In this case, again, compensation and fringe benefits. We propose to negotiate in good faith over compensation within the limits of available financial resources. The district may propose other amendments to this article. In addition to that, looking at fringe benefits, so, again, proposing to sunshine these for your approval, so that we can engage now in negotiations.
Do we have any public comment on this item?
No public comment.
Questions from board members? No. Do we have a motion? Second? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstain? The motion carries. Thank you. That concludes our items related to public hearing for sunshining proposals. Item 9.0, Board Workshop Strategic Plan and Other Initiatives. Item 9.1, The Early Identification and Intervention Systems: First Steps and Implementation, which will be presented by several board staff members this evening. Mr. Husher, Victoria Flores, Jennifer Kreschman, Christina Espinoza, Danny Rilary, and Ashley We have an all-star team.
Board President Ryan, Superintendent Aguilar, members of the board, good evening. My name is Doug Husher. I am the Assistant Superintendent of Student Support. It is my pleasure to share our beginning steps toward implementing our Early Identification and Intervention System, otherwise known as EIS. I am joined this evening by Victoria Flores, the Director of Student Support and Health Services. We're happy she's with us tonight, because it is her birthday. Christina Espinoza, the Director of High School Guidance and Counseling. Jennifer Kreschman, Specialist in Charge of the Be Here Attendance Grant. Danny Rilary, the Principal at Oak Ridge. Ashley Clark is representing our Student Support Center from Oak Ridge. And I do, I reiterate that these are our first steps in implementation tonight, part So, as you can see, the design and development of EIS included many employees representing both district departments and school sites. A steering team guided the development of the work. The team consisted of representatives from Special Ed, Continuous Improvement, Academics, the Enrollment and Attendance Center, and Student Support and Health Services. Meanwhile, a work team provided input each step of the way. That team included district office personnel, principals, as well as staff from our Student Support Centers. These teams have done an amazing job building the infrastructure of our early warning system. At the same time, we know there are lingering issues to address. These include inequitable distribution of resources, a lack of standardization of district processes, and switching from a system driven by referral to one driven by the data. So, on this slide here, the quote before you is from Robert Balfons. Balfons led the way with research on early warning systems in education settings. He observed that the earlier a student first sends a signal, the greater the risk that he or she will drop out of school. Balfons concluded that key early warning indicators were powerful predictors of high school completion. So, this next slide, in addition to Robert Balfons, other researchers have made the same observations. In fact, one being college and career-ready students have all successfully navigated key transitions in their learning. And equally important, poor ABCs, standing for attendance, behavior, and course performance, grades essentially, are key early warning indicators that signal a student has fallen off-track, and his or her graduation from high school may be in jeopardy. So, on the next slide, what you see here are the three early warning system indicators that are now incorporated into our EIS. For attendance, that indicator is defined by absences. The course performance indicator is defined primarily by grades at this time. And the behavior indicator is defined by suspensions and behavior incidents. So, there's a lot of good information on this page. Robert Balfons's groundbreaking work in Philadelphia has now been replicated in 10 other school systems across the US. Research has identified these early warning indicators that we call the ABCs. Attendance, that being less than 90%. Behavior, unsatisfactory marks in at least one class. And course performance, a final grain of F in math ELA or a credit-bearing grade in high school. The study in Philadelphia looked at sixth graders in '96 and '97, followed them through their middle school and high school. What the researchers learned was that sixth graders with one or more of the indicators had only a 15% to 25% chance of graduating from high school on time. The implications of this are huge. By tracking ABCs, it is possible to identify when a student begins to fall off-track, providing time to intervene and alter his or her trajectory through school and beyond. By using ABC early indicator data, it is possible to design more targeted and effective interventions at the individual, classroom, school, and even district levels. EIS helps school support teams give the right students the right support at exactly the right time.
All right. So, now, I'm going to actually walk you through how we put this research into practice here in SEUSD. So, using what we know, we defined color bands by tiers, by ABCs. And for each color band that we defined, and I'll just start to bring them in to not overwhelm you, you'll see the number of students within that color band and category. And this is data as of November 1. So, this is live data that our practitioners are using regularly. So, this first zone is our green zone, and this is really where we want our students to reside, or we want to be able to uplift our students into this zone. So, you'll see, they have really good attendance, they maybe miss a day or two, no suspensions, less than two behavior incidents. Everybody's allowed a little mistake, right? And they're really on track, grade-level-wise, both in high school and in elementary. So, again, keep this in mind. This is where we want our students to be, or where we want to lift our students up to. This is the goal. The next color band that we identified is yellow, and this is where we start to see our students falling into those at-risk ranges. So, as you'll see, we start to dip down into some chronic absenteeism, or really close-to-it behaviors at one suspension, a couple of different behavior incidents. And this is where we start to see that course performance slide. So, we're looking at, you know, if you have a D, or you're nearly on grade level. Bless you. And this is our opportunity to notice right away, intervene, and try to raise, you know, and move these students back up into the green zone. So, this is a really key indicator for us. The red zone is where we really start to, you know, have at-risk, really at-risk students that we really need to notice and intervene with. These are our students who are chronically absent, some even dipping down into severely chronically absent. They're struggling with behavior, something's going on, they've got two suspensions or four or more behavior incidents. And this is where we're starting to see Fs, Ds, not on grade level, or significantly not on grade level. We need to notice these students. So, just to make it fun, we added one more category, the purple category. And this was really, not to make it fun, but to disaggregate some of the data, especially around attendance. As you know, you know, chronic absenteeism is a really big issue. I'm here locally in the valley. And so, we wanted to be able to know, who are those students that are missing 80% or more of school? And as you'll see from the number next to it, it's a pretty, you know, significant number for us here in SAC City. So, this is the sort of fun part for me, because we get to talk about the actual tool. So, we were so fortunate enough to have a system designed and created just for our needs here in SAC City through our partnership with UC Merced. And so, this was really built to meet our needs here in SAC City. And this system visualizes data that for years, we've tried to gather. And let me just say, as someone who's tried to put Excel spreadsheets together, tried to figure out what students we should be targeting, I'd spend hours doing that. And now, at the click of a button, have the data that we need to be able to identify our students. So, it's really exciting. So, this system was designed with specific users in mind. And this really is helping us identify students in need of intervention, rather than that old system of waiting for someone to notice, right? Oh, I see that maybe you're struggling. And then actually fill out a referral or send someone an email. So, as you can imagine, there's a lot of breaks in a system like this. So, by the ability to have this data, we can notice right away when our students are struggling. So, we've got Student Support Center Services providers who are using this tool. That includes our SSC coordinators and specialists, our school social workers, our interns that serve in our district, who are earning their bachelor's of social work or master's of social work, are also using this tool. Our school counselors are starting to use this tool, attendance clerks, and our school site principals. But the most exciting part for me, you know, as a former practitioner and now leading this work, is that we also really get to support the intervention in EIS. And so, UC Merced also built database tools for us embedded inside EIS. So, this is super exciting. And you may know that student support centers have been around for about 25 years, I think a little bit longer, in the form of Healthy Start. And for about the past decade, we've been using databases, right? It's part of our professional ethics that we track, you know, and log our notes and what we're doing with students. But it's always been external, and we've always had to sort of create something for ourselves. So, this is the very first time that a tool has actually been built for this group that's embedded in our district systems, and is actually pulling data from Infinite Campus. So, you can imagine that I can click a button, find out which students I need to identify, and click another button, and document everything I need to document. So, this is just, it's really exciting for me, if that didn't come across. And, and I also want to call out that we've been able to replicate this application for the attendance staff. So not only can we track our referrals, assessments, interventions, notes, disposition for Student Support Center providers, but we've built out this application for attendance staff so they can track assessments, interventions, and notes in real time, and be able to understand what we're doing for our students. I also want to note that E I S information is embedded in the Performance and Targeted Action Index. So we see those indicators in the third readiness, middle school and high school readiness elements. And it's that green zone, again, that we're shooting for. So we, we see that E I S green zone in those elements. So this, this all articulates together, just to call that out. So just a real high level, we've defined interventions in our system based on tier level. This is just a real broad sampling, but every kind of intervention that we provide, we've listed out and given a tier level. So we just wanted to call out that, of course, we're always focused on those good prevention, universal interventions, things that promote positive attendance, positive school climate, building those positive relationships that we need with our families. But if and when our families need more targeted or strategic interventions, we're there. So this is just a sampling, but we've got our student absence review teams, mentoring, group counseling, check-in, check-out that you'll hear a little bit about, all sorts of information like that. And then also our Tier Three or Intensive Services. So, so this next slide, remember back to those color definitions, because I just want to say, so this is a triage protocol that was developed for Student Support staff. For any student meeting one of these 25 protocols, they'll be triaged to a Student Support Staff member. And you might notice, or I can just point out for you, that they're heavily weighted toward attendance and behavior, because that's the kind of professional expertise that our school social workers have. So red, or purple, red, yellow in attendance, and red, yellow behavior. So these are the kinds of students we're able to identify in real time. So as of November 7, we've identified district-wide over 8,000 students in our district that are meeting this profile right now. So at our 28 support centers and our District Connect Center, to date, we've been able to provide services to 1,614 of them. My rough math is roughly about 20 percent of those students. And for those students, we've provided over 3,000 documented interventions. So this is real time. We just started using this system barely two months in, but I, I wanted to give you a high-level overview of what's actually happening day-to-day. And I checked this data today, and it's gone up, right? So we've served over another 100 students and another 400 services. So again, just real quickly, wanted to give you another example. This is a screenshot of what staff see when they drill down to the student level. So you'll see up the top, the students off-track academically. And to the left, again, you'll notice those color bands in attendance, behavior, and course performance. And you can see the students really struggled with attendance. But this year is in the red, right? Struggled with academics, but something's slipping with behavior this year. So this student was assessed by an SSC staff member, and, and interventions were put in place right away, including attendance support. Transportation was really key. This, this school has actual grant to provide free bus passes to this student. When we reached out to the parent, we found out all sorts of things were going, and we needed to put some parent support in place. And then case management really kind of provides that overview of all of those services, tracking, monitoring. And then we also just wanted to point out for you the reasons for referral. And we've got lots of different reasons, but these are the ones that are really jumping off the page. Right away, you'll notice the ABCs are in there. Peer relationships, family stress, and the biggest one we see right now is mental health and wellness. So Principal Riletti and Ashley are going to walk you through what it looks like on their campus at Oak Ridge.
Hi there. I'm Ashley Powers-Clark. I'm the Student Support Center Coordinator at Oak Ridge Elementary. I realize we're low on time. I promise we can get through our section in about three minutes. So we, so Victoria was able to highlight how we're able to look at individual students in E I I S. And what Dani and I really want to talk about today is how do we use this information to start shifting an entire school system? So we want to talk about some of the work we've done at Oak Ridge around chronic absenteeism, and really emphasize what we've done just at a school-wide level. So the first and probably most key point of the E I I S system is early identification. So what does that mean when we talk about chronic absenteeism? So on the left-hand side, you can see that research says that any student that has three or more absences in the first month will likely go on to miss 10 percent or more of the school year. So we use that as, okay, well, that's our early identification indicator. So we use the E I S data. We screened all the students that had missed three or more days. And then on the left-hand side, you can see the data that says last quarter. We're able to see, so was this, was this a trend? Is it just a, did the student get the flu? What happened? So from that data, we screened out all of our students, and we found about 72 that needed additional attendance support. So what we did is we enrolled them in an evidence-based program called Check and Connect that's really supported by our city-year staff. So I say evidence-based, there's about 12 peer-reviewed studies that show that the Check and Connect model works. If you apply it to the right students and you implement it with fidelity, you've got to be prepared with your bibliography when you go in front of your staff, because about 20 percent of them are going to be like, this is never going to work. So you've got your, you've got your data, you've got your research to show that it will. So it's an evidence-based program. It focuses on really, really simple things that kids need. First is it connects every student who's chronically absent to a positive adult mentor. So when a kid like Jose walks on campus, every single day, he's greeted by a young, smiling, city-year person that has his goal sheet in front of him. They do what we call one-minute mentoring, so they just check in. How are you doing? How's your day going? What's your goals for the day? They send them off for the day. The expectation is that they have two positive connections with their teacher. At the end of the day, they check out with that same mentor, and they review their goals. And if they met their goals, they get a success ticket, right? So the students are rewarded for doing the right thing, and every day, they have somebody that notices them. Also, the monitoring, the data, and intervening very quickly is a key feature of the E I I S system. So every month, we review the data. This is just an example of what our program looked like after the first month. So 33 of the 72 students were progressing, which means they moved from the red to the yellow zone. We had 11 new students move from the yellow to the red zone, which means they needed additional support. There was 13 students who are in our purple zone who needed modification, and about nine who were ready to graduate out of the program to create more space for us. So that's the high-level overview of what, what the program has looked like. And I want to let Dani talk about some of the results that we've been able to get.
Good evening, everyone. So as you can see there in front of you, the results that we were extremely ecstatic about from the very beginning of the check-in, check-out, we saw it right away dramatically. What you don't see in front of you is 16, 17, the chronic absenteeism rate. It was hard to fit in due to the font and spacing, was similarly around 20 percent. So for two years in a row, our chronic absenteeism rate at Oak Ridge, obviously, was subpar. And so far, up to date this year, we're at 12.63 percent. Excited about the drop, and we're eager to continue moving forward and see more of a drop. However, we know when we implemented the check-in, check-out system, the check-in, connect, immediately right away, we saw vast difference in students. You don't know those 72 faces, but I do by name and face, and I see them every morning come onto school. And there's been a dramatic difference in those students and how they enter school. Some getting here now at 8:30 instead of 10:30 every day. They're less problematic on campus, and we're able to kind of connect with them and build stronger relationships with their families as well. So we're seeing a positive difference, not just in the chronic absenteeism rate, but as a whole for the child. So the next slide here is a snapshot of what the Performance and Targeted Action Index is, PATAI. It's a database that we can utilize, is through the UC Merced system. And as a principal, as an administrator, it's where I can access real-time data, because this communicates with other systems like Infinite Campus in our district. So you see the red box, that's where we got their chronic absenteeism rate under. Now, when you click on that for me, I can then look at subgroups and identify certain targeted groups I want to focus on as an administrator. And we know in education, obviously, and Superintendent Aguilar is very adamant and positive about this, that the end goal is grade level on-track readiness. So under chronic absenteeism as an element, there are sub-elements that we can monitor how our interventions are going, how are we doing with, you know, attendance retention and our growth, and overall, what's that say towards students then achieving academically or growing more towards grade level on-track readiness? So excited about the overarching system that we have in the district to monitor chronic absenteeism and supporting students academically.
Mr. Riletti.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, wrapping up, last two slides. You see a timeline here. This timeline basically just shows the progression of work. You can see we started in the fall of 2017. Trainings have been very customized to different user groups. We know that we've been able to offer training to student support staff, counselors, attendance staff, instructional assistants, superintendents, principals, which has been great. We look forward to bringing these groups back together to see what they've learned and to share ideas. Last slide is just what are lessons learned and some of the gaps. We've learned that the students have always been there. This was an observation by Principal Kirkland, who was on our work team. He said that one of, you know, that these, these kids have always been here. It's not like E I S invented these kids, right? And so the students have always been there. Now we can easily identify them, we can better understand the impact of our interventions, and we can have more productive conversations about the services we give these students. Additionally, E I S allows us to focus really on our efforts on certain groups of students and prioritize our work, given limited resources. Second thing you see is something that was learned is just the, the need for calibration of data. We know that we have a lack of calibration of data in practice at this time. There's technical and cultural aspects to this. Change does take time. We know, for example, that there's other work going on at the same time. Our culture and climate, suspension, and chronic absenteeism work group, for example, is working on standardizing some of these practices. As the practices become more standardized, it will lead to more responsive E I S system. And then just last, another gap that surfaced was the gap between students, students that need services and those that we're able to provide. As Victoria noted, there are over 8,000 students showing need for attendance, behavior, or behavior support, yet only 1,600 students are receiving actual services at this time. We do have 28 sites with student support centers and a connect center to handle referrals from sites without the support. However, there's a continued need for dialogue regarding the resources available, regarding how those resources are distributed, and how they're actually used. So, as I shared when we started, tonight's presentation is just about first steps. As we implement our early warning system, we're excited about E I S. An early warning system like E I S grounds us in our guiding principle of equity, ensuring all students graduate from high school with the most post-secondary choices from the widest array of options. And we do look forward to providing the board with more information, once we've had longer to put key components in place, test their use, and assess their impact. And so at this time, that concludes our presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Husher. Do we have any public comments on this item?
We have one public comment from Renee Webster-Hawkins.
Good evening, Renee.
Good evening, Chairman, Superintendent, members of the board. I'm thrilled that the district is robustly moving forward with this early identification and indicator system. What we know is that systemic strategies like this are essential to correct many of the challenges that this, this board and the district are working on. Couple of things, just in reading through the staff materials, what's missing for me are the details on how this program will be scaled up to implement in all schools, not just those with learning centers. That's one little point. The bigger substantive piece that I believe must be added to any early identification system is a universal screening tool to identify children in kindergarten and first grade who are at risk for a learning disability and who may be a struggling reader. The plan does include C as the course performance. However, it seems to be a scattershot approach to extracting data over the course of a student's K through six career before they're identified as a struggling student, whereas we know universal screeners can identify students at risk for those differences and needing differentiated support as early as kindergarten before they failed. We don't want to wait for indicators that show that they're failing. We want to identify them right out of the gate. Universal screeners are imperative to many of your policies. They're an imperative to achieve student equity. They're an imperative to break the school-to-prison pipeline. They're an imperative to avoid long-term costs and adverse consequences of not identifying these struggling readers early. They're quick to administer in all general ed classrooms. I was thrilled to meet with Dr. Taylor recently to discuss how to implement universal screening in this district, and I know she's considering how to implement it in many of the, the other initiatives underway. I think it needs to be embedded in this one as well. Let's not wait for these students to fail. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Webster. Do we have any other public comments on this item?
No further public comments.
So we will take board member comments and questions. First, we have a comment from First Vice President Wu, followed by Vice President Minnick.
Thank you, President Ryan. Thank you for the presentation. I just want to note that the more that we have our students in school, the better the funding will be for our, for our district. And I just wanted to point out, for those parents who don't make that, have that realization, 20 percent of absence is only one day a week for the 36 weeks of the year. So if a student misses one day a week for those 36 weeks of school that they're in school, that is 20 percent easily. And so those are the children who are at risk of not graduating. It's not much, so for those parents who think nothing of maybe keeping their child away from school, it's just once a week, and that's really setting them up for failure. And I want to make a special note of what that 20 percent means. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Wu. Vice President Minnick.
Thank you. So I, I just want to say thank you for all the work that went into this. This is really exciting. And I, and I appreciate kind of the examples you gave of how this, how this can work. And, you know, I appreciated, you know, Ms. Flores talking about how this prevents us kind of waiting around for someone to notice when, when a kid's having trouble. And this can make a huge difference. The other thing too, and I was, I was thinking, because, you know, we, we think about these kind of data tools and how we're just, you know, identifying, you know, these points. But when Ms. Clark and Mr. Riletti spoke of the, the impact it's had on that campus, you know, we think about how this system, really like with that city-year example, really led to this relationship-building for kids with caring adults. And that's going to keep them coming to school, that's going to make them try harder, that's going to have like such an impact on them. And so, you know, this is not about just, you know, calculating data and figuring out where kids are at. Like, this is this tool that's going to allow these relationships to flourish, and it's really going to be able to make a huge impact on kids. So I really appreciate that example, because it really brings this to life. And thanks for all the work on this. This is really exciting.
Do we have any other questions or comments from board members?
No. I have a couple of comments and questions. I do want to ask Ms. Flores, to the point that was brought up by Renee Webster, how are we going to scale E I I S at all school sites? My understanding was that it was not just for those that were fortunate enough to have student support centers, but that E I I S was meant to serve students district-wide. So can you speak to that?
Yeah, so we started with student support centers with some real, you know, users in mind, but we are scaling up and training all school site principals scheduled for the end of November and very early December. So by the first week in December, all school site principals will be trained in using this tool. And we'll talk through what are the district resources that they have, like the Connect Center, if you're noticing that a student is meeting one of those really high-risk profiles, and you maybe learn some information to remember what we do have district-wide.
Yeah, and I would add, although we can always call into question the number of resources we have to meet student needs, I would have been delighted, as a school principal, even when I was a principal at a school without a student support center, to have had this tool, just because it, it focuses your thinking on a group of students or groups of students that really need help, and you can pull your resources even at those schools, you just have to be creative in your approach. And so we did pull six principals from sites that don't have student support centers, just to pick their brains also. And now we're going to pull all those principals together, the remaining sites, to kind of share some of the ideas they came up with.
Wonderful. I want to ask a question on slide number 10. You list out an identification of 8,100 students based upon the metrics or indicators in E I I S. And then 1,600 of those students actually received interventions. So can you speak to the mismatch between identification? So can you speak to the mismatch between identification of students being part of that warning and those that are actually then in receipt of services?
Yeah, so this is really where we're leaning into this work in real time, because, you know, our former system was still referral-based. So we're still managing that process while also looking at the data in EIS and really trying to triage and look at this, what are the other available resources, and just try to meet all of this need. This is 38 staff members who are doing this work. And yes, we have interns, but for those of you that have ever had an intern, you know, that's work as well. But this really is the work. How do we make sure we're getting the right support to the right student at the right time? And we're going to continue to look at this data and review that and try to figure out how are we using our resources in the right way? Are we distributing this correctly? So this is, this learning will continue all year long.
Thank you. I appreciate that. A couple of other comments that I had. You know, I did want to say on the point that was made by Renee Webster about the need for early assessment, that I have seen that firsthand. I mean, I really had to push, over the course of two years, to be an advocate for my daughter to receive assessments to determine whether or not she had a learning disability. So, you know, we know that academic achievement is not assessed until the second grade, and that is problematic, right? As a parent, I will never forget, for the first time in December of kindergarten, learning that my daughter was already falling severely off track. And the several months of missed intervention as a result of not having any assessment prior to that. And so I would love to learn how we're going to be integrating assessments into the EIS system by virtue of trying to ensure that we are helping students meet grade level early on versus intervening after they're already reaching a critical marker.
So I think one thing with EIS, we are putting this in place, but being fully cognizant of there's other bodies of work going on at the same time. And one of those bodies of work would be for the multi-tiered system of supports work group that's working on. We would definitely want to see possibly early screening being part of that body of work. And then likewise, we know that it's insufficient, the number of assessments, like you just indicated. We look forward to, as we negotiate and come to more common assessments that we can use to make determinations about what kids we need to intervene early with.
So my final comment is really just, if anything, more of a compliment. You know, I want to commend the entire team for the work that they've put into this. I think it's pretty remarkable, in a fairly short period of time, what you've been able to create. One of the things that I often lament as a social justice and equity advocate is that so often we have piecemeal supports that rely upon luck. And we know that what happens is that students, quite most often, our most vulnerable students, slip through the cracks under a structure like this. So when we talk about systems redesign, we're looking at how do we put in place systems that ensure at every step of the way, we are catching students when they fall off track, when they express signs of distress, whether it's absenteeism or lowered academic achievement, and then meet them where they're at in a fashion where we recognize the strengths that they bring to the table versus make them feel like in some way they're deficient. And so I'm very grateful to the entire team for leaning into this work. And I also am mindful of the fact that had it not been for this strong partnership that we established with the University of California Merced, we would not have been able to build this data system that's been recognized at a state and national level in such a quick fashion. So thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to item 9.2, African-American Achievement Update.
Good evening, Board President Ryan, Board members, Superintendent Aguilar. My name is Vincent Harris. I'm the Chief of Continuous Improvement and Accountability. I'm joined by our Chief Academic Officer, Dr. Iris Taylor. We'll briefly provide a quick update to the board regarding the work of the African-American Achievement Task Force. The work kicked off actually this fall, based on the board's direction and approval of the task force's formation. Ultimately, the work of the task force is really anchored in the core value. If the work is done well, which is being done well right now, the ultimate effort is to vigilantly work to confront and interrupt inequities that exist to level the playing field. And so in the context of this work, we've been studying the issues of African-American students within our district across multiple measures. And as the board has already seen numerous times, we know the data is currently unacceptable. And so the task force has really been diving in, looking at the data with a real sense of how do we create the appropriate disruptions to create conditions of success for African-American students and frankly, all students. And so as we think about the definition of equity, access, and social justice that we're anchored in in our district work, really, it's the second bullet that speaks to the longstanding downdrafting practices and procedures that we're looking to disrupt. And so the task force has really been spending a lot of time intentionally trying to understand the current reality within Sacramento City Unified with a real focus on, so what must we do to disrupt the current inequities that we see? And so we're honored to have a very distinguished group of task force members. As you can see from the list in front of you, they represent a range of perspectives, a range of community leaders, those within our district in terms of folks who are offering their expertise on work they've done for several years, and then actually many folks within the Sacramento City community in terms of nonprofits, community-based organizations, other instructional leaders, offering their perspectives, which has led to rich and important dialogue with us deconstructing longstanding challenges, and also with a focus on developing even just at this early stage of the work, to some degree, preliminary recommendations. And so we're really appreciative. We did ask task force members, if possible, to come this evening, but many of them RSVP'd that due to other commitments, they weren't able to make it. But this group has really been engaged, and they really have been showing up on Tuesday nights and staying two hours plus in very important dialogue. And so this slide is just meant to give you an overview of the work thus far. Again, it's early in our journey, but there's been eight meetings so far since September 27th. And then really, as I mentioned previously, the work has really been about building context. And so there's been a study of Sacramento City Unified results for African-American students, and then actually benchmarking results with other districts, trying to again unpack both within our region and across the state and across the nation, frankly, what can we see that will help us to create different outcomes, change conditions for all of our African-American students. And then actually, we're in a season now of actually doing research. And so we've done some research in terms of reports that have been published about creating opportunities for all students, and particularly with a focus for African-American students. And then actually, we're doing internal research with a series of focus groups. We're actually about midway through that process now. We've had our principal and teacher-focused groups, and going forward, over the next couple of weeks, we're going to have a student and parent-focused group as well. These are really important to the task force to really gain multiple perspectives as we think about the wicked problem of the achievement gaps that we see with African-American students and ways in which we can enlist all of our stakeholders to change conditions. And then, as I shared, we've got some preliminary thoughts. These are not totally vetted or flushed out, but really some things have even emerged in the relatively short period that we've been meeting around professional learning, supports for students, really ties to the previous presentation around the power of our EIS system, and then leadership development and building climate supports, and of course, obviously, alternatives to suspension. And then finally, as we think of the going forward, we're going to wrap up the focus groups, as I mentioned, by December 4th, really continue our research focus, refinement of recommendations, and really distilling them into something that is actionable and can be incorporated into the budget processes as requested by the board. And then we've been thinking, as we've gotten feedback from members of the public who've attended some of the work sessions of the task force, that we need to be thoughtful about a public review process. And so we're thinking about that as well. And then finally, we're expecting to present the final recommendations at the January 17th, 2019 board meeting for your review and hopefully adoption of many of them. And with that, I'll end the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Do we have any public comments on this item?
We have one public comment, Renee Webster-Hawkins.
Good evening, President, and members of the board. As a member, former member of the Community Advisory Committee and current member of the Parent Advisory Committee for the LCAP, I've been engaged in a number of conversations in those settings, as well as for the last several months, the election season and campaign for open trustee seats here have really generated some positive dialogue among parents. And one of the resounding themes that I just come away from these conversations with is that there is this intersection between our African-American students and our special education students. We know that our African-American students with disabilities are identified later disproportionately for learning disabilities, that they're over-identified for emotional disabilities, they're more likely to be downdrafted in terms of expected outcomes, that African-American students with disabilities without behavior problems are more likely to be socially promoted through school, even if they're not showing grade-level achievement and not provided the proactive enrichment of their academic program. We also know that they have the lowest graduation rates. I know that this initiative and the members of the Special Education Initiative and that the members working on the LCAP are all aware of this intersectionality. And in conversations with those teams, everyone is verbally committed to ensuring that that intersectionality is addressed, but I, to date, don't see that. I don't see the tight correlation across the initiatives, and that's why I'm here, to remind you that I'm keeping my eye on it, and I would hope that all of you do, too. Personal perspective, as a white woman of privilege with an African-American's child, I hear and see things that are cringe-worthy, even in all of these groups. I think the president can sympathize with me on that. I'm grateful to our superintendent's reminder that every system is perfectly designed to achieve the outcomes that it gets, and the poor performance of our African-American students with disabilities reflects that. And to rephrase your point you just made earlier, Ms. President, is that a new system that is designed to uplift the most vulnerable will achieve the most phenomenal results for all. So that's why I'm here to underscore that need within the African-American Achievement Task Force. I would ask that one of the focus groups or workshops upcoming be a specific workshop on this intersectionality, and that there is robust and advanced proactive invitation to members of the Community Advisory Committee, bringing in RSP teachers at both the elementary and high school levels, instructional aides, as well as the special ed management team. And that would be my request, to make sure we have a focused discussion.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your comments. We have no other public commentary. Do we have board member comments at this time? First Vice President Wu.
Thank you, President Ryan. I just have a question, Mr. Harris. Are we beginning to look into whether or not there may be a nexus between African-American student performance on our campuses and the use of SROs by the Sac City Unified School District?
So that has not come up yet, Board Member, was a separate topic, but we have been, to the speaker's comments, looking at intersectionality in terms of looking at students who with disabilities, looking at foster youth, looking at homeless. And so we have been trying to deconstruct the experience of African-American students in kind of a broad sense, but that topic specifically has not come up yet from the task force, is something for us to dig deeper in.
And I'd like to suggest it if it's, if the task force is open to looking into it.
Very good.
Thank you, First Vice President Wu. I want to appreciate the efforts of both Dr. Taylor and Dr. Harris, as well as the wonderful group of educators and community leaders that are participating in the African-American Achievement Task Force. I do want to mention that I have consistently received feedback that we need to ensure that beyond the presentation to the board on initial findings and recommendations, there is a space to continue the conversation and ensure accountability in actually seeing those recommendations into fruition. You talked about how much time people have given to this work. I want to thank Dr. Ellerby, who has served as a volunteer and has been, week after week, tirelessly participating in our Achievement Initiative Task Force meetings, as have most of the task force members. It has been a significant commitment of time. That being said, I don't want to abuse the gift of their time. I want to ensure that what they bring forward is actionable, is time-limited, and provides a clear roadmap for steps that we will take in the short term and the long term. I do want to call out a few things. I know that we were fortunate enough to receive a grant to help with some of the facilitation and this work, and that we are looking at how the funds, the one-time funds for our lowest-performing subgroup as part of this year's state budget, might support the implementation of some of these recommendations. I do want to say beyond that, though, our budget has not historically prioritized this key student subgroup who, as we know, is failing. And when Ms. Webster talked about the intersectionality between African-American students and special education, it is true, it is epidemic, and it has to be addressed. I know that this leads into the next conversation, our Special Education Update. I am not comfortable with hoping that we receive the kind of resources necessary through a budget commitment to serve these student populations. Safeguards have not been created for funding these key student subgroups, and we have a moral responsibility to do that as a board. So thank you. Moving on to item 9.3, the Special Education Update, Dr. Iris Taylor and Becky Bryant.
Good evening, Board President Ryan, Superintendent Aguilar, members of the board. My name is Iris Taylor. I'm the Chief Academic Officer. And joining me tonight is Becky Bryant, our Director of Special Education and our Director of SULPA. Also in the audience is our team of special education supervisors, and we just want to thank them for joining us tonight as well. That's Lisa Moore, Catherine Brown, Sarah Da, and Lynn Rubacaba, who is not able to join us tonight. We're returning tonight to provide you with an update on the work underway to address the recommendations that were put forth by the Council of the Great City Schools. And tonight's presentation will focus on just sharing with you what the work has been since our update in September. Tonight's presentation is grounded in the district's core value, which has been mentioned earlier tonight, but this core value is critical because it recognizes that the fact that the outcomes that we're seeing for our students with disabilities are really a design question, it's a design challenge for us. That means that we can redesign the system, however, and are required to redesign the system in order to get different outcomes. We're also working on this, the special education recommendations, from the lens of our guiding principle, that all of our students, and all meaning all, all of our students inclusive of our students with disabilities, have an equal opportunity to graduate with the greatest number of post-secondary choices from the widest array of options. So in tonight's presentation, we've shifted this into three sections. We're going to provide you with a brief update around the Community Advisory Committee, and then we'll dive into the theory of action framework that we presented in previous board presentations. And we'll focus you on two recommendations of the 10 to share with you some updates. And then we'll end with lessons learned and next steps. So for our Community Advisory Committee, we're really excited about the work and the reconstitution of the committee. The committee has met twice so far this year. There was a general meeting in September, and then a workshop on October 17th, where we began unpacking some of the recommendations with the Community Advisory Committee attendees. Our average meeting attendance has been between 45 to 50 students, and we're in the process of identifying, electing officers for the Community Advisory Committee. There's a clause in the bylaws that require that participants attend at least two meetings to become members, and the members are the ones who need to elect officers. And so we're looking for that to occur at our next meeting on November 29th, and then electing officers in December. This is a correction from what's in the executive summary, I need to note that. Because of that clause in the bylaws, we're having to shift the timeframe down a meeting or two before we actually move to elect officers. down a meeting or two before we actually move to elect officers. So we're going to share with you just a deeper dive into two of the recommendations. And so here you'll see a project plan for how we've scoped out what we need to do in terms of recommendation one, which is around a multi-tiered system of supports. And so we want to call your attention to some key areas here. See, my boxes didn't quite come in right. But some key areas that we're going to focus in on. And that's around really assessing what our current reality is in terms of what our leadership structure is around a multi-tiered system of supports. We know our sites are doing work, and they're doing good work, but we don't have a sense across the district as a whole how this is playing out in each of our sites. So a key part of this, and the research does call for some inventorying of current practice. So through some inventory, we want to look at what's our leadership team structure and who's engaged at sites around academic interventions as well as behavioral interventions. We also want to look at what are site-level assessment practices. You heard a little bit about this in the previous presentation around EIIS. Well, what are those local assessments that are being administered at the sites to gain a better understanding of how our students are doing academically? And then what's the work underway around the database for documenting our interventions? And then inventorying, who are the staff that are involved in providing such interventions? And so our MTSS work team has been meeting over the past few months, as well as our school climate suspension and chronic absenteeism work team. And part of the work has been centered on, like, developing an inventory. We borrowed and looked at the research from different systems. In a lot of states, at the state level, they've developed and implemented the multi-tiered system of supports. And so we've looked at Kansas, we've looked at Florida, and we've looked at different ways that they've gone about gathering this information to develop both an academic intervention survey as well as a climate and suspension survey. We are planning to administer this with our site leaders in December 2018, and then the information will come back to the schoolwork teams to do an analysis of what our current practice and our current reality is. The MTSS work team has also begun looking at, in the area of academic interventions and supports, what are some of the indicators, sample metrics, indicators, or questions that we would want to see answered as a result of our work around academic interventions and supports? And so those questions are similar to what you heard around chronic absenteeism, right? Who are the students who are underperforming? And our EIIS system allows us to see that pretty quickly, right? Who's failing, whether it's academic marks? And what we want to push into is who's underperforming in terms of assessments? Also wanting to see how many of our students who are off-track are receiving academic interventions and instructional interventions to meet their learning needs. And out of those students who are experiencing academic interventions, how many of them are making expected progress or making growth? And then how many of those students continue to make growth from one marking period to the next marking period, or one assessment period to the next assessment period? And then finally, with our focus on grade-level readiness, how many of our students who are receiving interventions are actually making progress towards grade-level readiness or who are on grade level after receiving those interventions? I won't go through these in the same level of details, but with a multi-tiered system of supports, you're looking at students who are academically underperforming as well as students who are performing, who may be meeting or exceeding, because those students also need supports to continue to work to their potential. And so the team, the work team, decided that we also needed a set of indicators that looked at those advanced learners as well as our students who are struggling. And that's what you see reflected here. I do want to bring us back to the first presentation around EIIS, because some of the questions that came up in public comment, I think, are pretty telling. Because, you know, like, MTSS, EIIS, what's the relationship? These two systems are intricately integrated. As a matter of fact, many of the people who were up for the EIS presentation also serve on our MTSS work team, and they also serve on our climate and suspension work team. And so the work that you saw for EIIS focused around attendance and behavior. Our MTSS work team is really beginning to dive into those academic interventions and supports. But we also plan to input those interventions into that EIIS system to be able to track all three types of interventions at the end of the day. So Becky Bryant is going to share with you some updates on recommendation two, to tell you what our current work is around that recommendation.
To continue, we have continued our work on the referral eligibility and assessment. You will see the red line box that highlights the activities that we've been working on since the last time that we met with you. The entire chart is the total tasks that are due on that specific recommendation. However, we have focused of late on identifying notification triggers, developing a system to monitor that, how to advance the monitoring to a higher level of supervision if, in fact, the process is not advanced by the case manager. When a student is initially referred for an assessment for special education, we have 15 days to act. And within those 15 days, we have to acknowledge the request of whomever made that assessment request and provide the parent, within that 15-day timeline, with the assessment plan or to tell them why we're not going to assess through a prior written notice. This was one of our items in our CDE compliance review that we did not meet. And so we are focusing on that particularly right now because we are cleaning up that CDE review currently, and also because this is the beginning of the process. So we're happy to say that we worked hard with our partners in the IT department. Without their help, we would have not been able to accomplish this. And our first notification, the 15-day notification, went live on October 29th. This is our work process that has been developed. It's a very long and broad work process, and you're seeing just the first 15 days of the initial process. During that time, once the initial referral has been initiated and those come through our office, that's a little change in the original procedure, there are notifications sent to the site, the site administrator, the case manager, and the parent when the 15-day timeline starts, when the seven-day timeline arrives, when there is a one-day timeline before the assessment presentation becomes overdue, and then overdue notifications, which will come day after day until that assessment plan is returned signed. So it's a built-in data system that we did not have before. Our current student system that we hold our IEPs, our SAFE system, did not have this type of mechanism built in. So it was actually designed just for us internally, for us to track that. The unintended consequence of this has been that we've been able to troubleshoot much more quickly and intervene and actually clean up some of our internal data that we would not have known was not correct prior to this. So as we approach that 15-day timeline, the site administrator gets emails, and they can intervene. The parent gets emails, and there are email messages that go to the parent to tell them what their next steps are if they have not been presented with an assessment plan. Our next phase of this project is to build, test, and implement the rest of the 60-day timeline, which completes the initial referral process. And we anticipate doing that after the first of the year, probably early February. This graph actually represents a piece of our data that we were able to glean from the system that ranged from October 29th through November 8th. During that time, 35 students were referred for an initial assessment. At the 15-day notification, 35 case managers, site administrators, and parents were notified. At the seven-day notification, of those 35, 18 were signed. At the one-day notification, an additional one was signed, which was another 3%. Then there's a 24-hour window before the overdue notifications begin to go out, and an additional four were signed, leaving 12 not signed on the day they were due. That is not, of course, the data that we want to see, but it's the data that we have. So it gives us information. This also has enabled us to troubleshoot with the school sites when they call us and say that, you know, their data may not meet what our data has, and then we can go in and investigate and correct it. This is a student who is an elementary school student, who there was an assessment initiated on October 22nd. Because October 29th was the first day that the notifications came about, the 15-day and the seven-day went out on the same day. On the 31st of October, the parents signed the assessment plan, so there was no one-day notification and no overdue. So this is a positive example of where a 15-day timeline was met. We've continued our professional learning to build capacity for our site leaders by providing sessions on October 2nd, September 26th, and monthly sessions continuing throughout the year. And the topics are about monitoring and accountability for IEPs, participation, and implementation. We also trained central office staff on September 21st on the same topics. And finally, we trained language, speech, and hearing specialists on November 9th, focusing on bilingual assessments. Our special education work team also contains many of the members that sit on the other work teams and site principals, which have provided very valuable feedback of our work along the way. And all the feedback that we receive, we go back, we reflect, and we make changes as Our lessons learned, building these theories of action are ongoing, and every time we receive feedback, we need to go back and make revisions. We know we need to have greater communication and transparency to improve our system overall. And we know that that data analysis that we're beginning to do needs to continue and is vital. Our next steps, continue to gather that feedback from our CAC and other stakeholders, continue to serve on all the other work groups, and participate in the climate and culture initiatives going on in the district, and establish those consistent periods to review and analyze And that concludes our presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Bryant. Do we have any public comments on this item?
Yes, we have one public comment from Renee Webster-Hawkins.
We're putting you to work tonight, Renee.
Getting my steps in. Good evening. I want to clarify that I'm not currently a member of the CAC. I haven't met the attendance requirements, but I am a parent and active in following these efforts. And I want to start out by saying how much I appreciate the depth and breadth that the leadership team is approaching the special ed audit now, and the method of inquiry and the approach to building up the deficiencies system-wide. And truly, the leadership of this team of ladies sitting up here over the last six months has been nothing short of remarkable. I walk a tight rope that I felt palpably in the last CAC meeting where these first two recommendations were presented. And it's a tight rope that reflects the leadership's approach to addressing these deficiencies systematically and thoughtfully, while at the same time knowing that there's current students now that desperately need more adequate services. That feeling was present in the audience there. And at the same time, you know, I appreciate that the leadership team is trying to take the time to break through the edu-speak and share all of this dense information and these concepts and these best practices in plain language that most of us noneducators use on a daily basis. So that said, you know, it's painstaking, the work that this team is doing to be transparent with the community. And I guess I would just hope that the next few conversations will go more smoothly because they tackled MTSS at the first one, which is, you know, the mediest one. I think that the feeling of the group coming away from that conversation, just as a point of feedback, was, you know, where is my child? Okay, I'm trying to understand what this MTSS is as a conceptual framework, but parents are there wanting to know, how is my child, say, with autism going to be supported in this? How's my child with mental health disabilities going to be supported within this? How's my child in high school that needs transition help going into college or a career plan get a fit into this MTSS? So it's really giving life to the strands in the educational rope that I think that the community is anxious and thirsty for. And then lastly, just really quickly on the point of transparency, myself, I have recently encountered in a number of these conversations, including the LCAP, and these, that there's an assessment agreement of sorts embedded within the collective bargaining agreement, which limits, apparently, the ability of this district to conduct these universal inventories of resources at the sites, to assess teacher preparation, to evaluate student readiness at different levels and by different metrics. And so I wanted to understand what this agreement was, and I submitted a Public Records Act request to get this assessment MOU. And what I was given was a list of URLs to the last 20 years of tentative agreements and collective bargaining agreements. And I didn't think that I'd have to use my Stanford Law degree in eight hours of time to weed through all that documents to just understand what are the handcuffs that you all are facing. So that's a very specific ask that I have, that somehow this district can translate what that assessment agreement is, what it restricts, what it allows, and be transparent with that with all parents so we can do our part in having conversations with all the stakeholders that are a party to that agreement so we can help you be better in that regard.
Thank you, Ms. Webster. That's excellent feedback. Do we have any board member comments and questions? We have one from Vice President Minnick.
Yeah, it's not really a question. I just wanted to recognize, one, the amount of work that's going into this, and I appreciate it. And I think I was at one of the new CAC meetings, I think it was the October one, was it the second one? And I was blown away, one, by the sheer number of people that attended. I thought that was really cool. There was a lot of excitement in that room, and I think that, you know, those who were there, you know, felt it. You know, people were anxious to nominate people for leadership roles in that committee, and I was really happy to see that. The other thing, there was a great kind of diversity of that group. It was parents, but it was also district staff people, both from in and outside of the classroom, who were also parents of kids with special needs. I know a friend of mine who's a librarian at one of our schools that also has a child with autism, and she was there. And there was a lot of folks who played multiple roles. And I don't know, there's probably like, I don't know, 50 or 60 people there at that meeting. And I just want to make sure that we, you know, capitalize on this energy that's going on. It was exciting, and I think that, you know, I think that we've had some past missteps with the Community Advisory Committee and maybe not utilize them as well as we could have. But I feel like there's this kind of renewed excitement with a lot of new folks who are excited to participate that didn't realize before that that was even an option. And so, one, I appreciate that you got the information out to all our families. I think that made a huge difference. And then, once they were there, you know, getting them, you know, fired up to have a voice. So I really appreciate that, and I think that's going to guide us in a lot of our ability to implement a lot of these. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Minnick. I want to also appreciate and commend the team for the work that they've done over the course of the last six months. I will tell you, I think you know that I was very frustrated after the special education audit on the lack of action. And there were a variety of reasons it took longer than one would hope. But I am appreciative that with the superintendent and our team... But I am appreciative that with the superintendent and our team, we are in a very ambitious and unapologetic way pursuing the reforms that we should have been pursuing years ago around better meeting the needs of our special education student population as well as our African-American population. And I think we've just had two good presentations outlining those efforts. I want to also share that there is almost not a day that goes by that I am not approached by some parent trying to navigate the special education system in the district. Only two days ago, I went to get a coffee at the coffee shop down the street from my house, and the barista there, who has a child at David Lubin, almost in tears, started telling me about how she was struggling to ensure that her son's IEP was met. And I have to tell you, as a parent who reached out to Renee when I was navigating the special education system myself, even with district resources, even as a board member, I understand how overwhelming, scary, and precarious this can be. We have to do a better job of empowering our parents with information and doing a heat map, if you will, of the school sites where we have more, a greater preponderance of complaints, because I think we have to begin using data to drill down to, is it a school site where there is disproportionality? Is it a classroom where we're struggling at a higher level? And using that as a tool to inform our decision-making. I appreciate your work. I also understand this idea that the superintendent consistently talks about of being impatiently patient, but it is hard to do that when we know that we're failing students in real time. So thank you for all of the effort that you've put forward. Item 10.0, our consent agenda. Okay?
We have one public comment.
We have one public comment on our consent agenda on item 10.1.
10.1A, Renee Webster-Hawkins.
Hello, President and Superintendent, members of the board. Yes, on item 10.0, which is, and then embedded in that, there is an MOU between the district and Woodbine School for what may be the pilot literacy project referred to in the staff report for the special education update that we just had a presentation on. And a few things about this, I mean, this is an example, I think, of what I was just talking about, about, you know, the strands in the educational rope. And so this is a very specific strategy to upscale and upgrade, differentiate learning for kids that are struggling readers. Just a, a point, though, again, these, this is the kind of effort that would be good to have a preview with the CAC before it's brought to you for your approval, whether by presentation or on the consent agenda, because there's a lot of resources in this community that, that have experience with some of these curriculums being mentioned in this MOU, and in particular, might dispel some concerns like the ones that I'm experiencing right now. I'm hoping that the SIPs curriculum is considered a tier-one, maybe tier-two intervention, and that there's further plans for more intensive tier-three intervention for students with specific learning disabilities in reading or dyslexia, because many experts in the field of learning disabilities and structured literacy, including those who served on the statewide dyslexia task force, have a dim view of the ability of the SIPs or even the newly revised SIPs program to meet the needs of kids with phonological processing or, or dyslexia disorders. So it's just a, an example of the way, maybe to your point, Member Minnick, if the CAC was engaged more proactively on these proposals, there could be some better understanding and maybe even course correction or contextual presentation to these items.
Thank you, Ms. Webster. Do we have a motion on the consent agenda?
I'm voting yes.
Do we have a second?
Yes.
Student board member preferential vote.
I vote yes on all open session items.
All those in favor? Any opposed, abstained, the motion carries. Moving on to item 11.0, business and financial information and reports. Item 11.1, receive business and financial information, purchase reports. 11.2, receive the monthly suspension report. Item 12.0, future board meeting dates and locations. Our next board meeting will be on December 6th. I want to also call out, we will have a board meeting in December on the 13th as well, and that was one of the items we voted on consent. And we are actually going to adjourn back to closed session. Thank you.